Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this June 7, 2007, regular meeting of the Olathe Board of Education. Ms. Carpenter, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley, here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum to conduct our business tonight. Our first item of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. All, would you make introductions here, please?
Yes, I'd like Trevor Gilmore to come forward, please. And Trevor is a recent Olathe East graduate, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about him, which is highly interesting, as soon as we finish our pledge. And then he's got some people here that he'd like to introduce, okay? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Trevor, and I think you'll see why having him lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight is so special and patriotic. Just to give you a little background, as a success story here, Trevor began his educational career in preschool as a model peer at what was formerly the DLC, the Disabled Learning Center, which is now Heartland Learning Center. And then he followed that career step to Meadow Lane Elementary School. And then, following that, when they moved again, he also attended Heatherstone Elementary School. Following elementary school, he began his middle school career at California Trail Junior High, and then went on to Olathe East High School, where he just graduated, and was involved in choir and drama. I think you got to take a pretty exciting trip this year, didn't you? Or last year?
Sophomore year.
Sophomore year. Trevor also was an accomplished guitar player who loves to write music and has participated in and put together his own bands. He is entering the Marine Corps to pursue a position in, and I'm reading this because I have to get the words right, in the intelligence area as a crypto-logical linguist. Crypto-logical linguist. You have to be able to say that to even begin to study it. After boot camp, he'll spend a year in Monterey, California, learning whatever language the military assigns to him. I don't think you get to choose it. They just tell you what you need, and you have to learn it. The school in Monterey is where all the Armed Forces send their people to language school. Trevor leaves on Monday for boot camp after his family turns him over to his recruiter on Sunday night. And so, we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize one of our finest graduates here, and I'd like to have him take a few moments and introduce his esteemed family members and friends who are here with him tonight. I think this is a pretty hard transition here. I think everyone's very proud of Trevor, but it is a time of reality here, as he gets ready to move on to a very important step in his life and service to our country. So Trevor, you want to tell us who's here tonight?
I'd like to introduce my mother, Julie Gilmore. Next to her, my brother Jacob Gilmore, his friend Robbie Wegley, and my friend Adam Smith, and, of course, my dad, Kevin Gilmore. Oh, my grandma, too. Gary Eckler.
Thank you, Trevor, and we appreciate the support of your family through this. And I know this is an important time for your dad as well and your mom, and so, best wishes and for all of your safety, and also learning whatever that assigned language is. I can't wait to hear what it is. Maybe something new we have to start teaching in Olathe.
Thank you, Dr. All, and thank you, Trevor. We love you, and we're going to be praying for you and wish you well. And I told him he's going into intelligence, so he's never going to be able to tell me what he's doing. But we are very proud of you, Trevor, and thank you for being here tonight. And Dr. All, thank you for inviting him. All right, would you now provide us, Dr. All, please, with the overview of our agenda tonight, and then we'll move on with our regular business?
Yes, I'd like to do an introduction right now of a new staff member to make sure that the board and the community is aware of his arriving in Olathe. I'd like John Hutchinson to please stand. And I think John's been here since May 30. John, if you'll come forward to the microphone. John is our new Director of Business and Finance. He works with Gary in the Business and Finance Division. We've had a little restructuring, and we've had one position that was vacated, and this has allowed us to bring someone like John into the district with his excellent background and experience. I'll say a couple of things, and I'll let John tell you just a couple of things about his family. We are proud that he comes with his background as an MBA and a CPA, and that's going to be a positive skill set for us. He's also had experiences in school finance in one of our benchmark districts, Francis Howell, in the St. Louis area, and other school districts there. So he has both public school experience, he's had private school experience in finance as well as his background. So, John, you want to say just a few words about how you got here?
Sure. As Dr. All said, I have a background in both public and private education. Rockwood School Districts, which is a growing district in the western part of St. Louis, Francis Howell, which is a booming area in St. Charles, which is right outside of St. Louis. And the last five years, I spent at a private high school that moved its entire campus. So it was a nice mix of experiences to tack onto the corporate experiences I had before that. My wife and I are quickly trying to get our house ready to sell in St. Louis and find something here before the start of school. I have a junior and sophomore daughters and a third-grade son, so we have a lot going on this summer. So I'm living out of a hotel and love coming to work here. It's a wonderful district, and you should be commended on all your efforts thus far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the overview of the meeting, we'll begin with staff presentations. The first presentation will be on succession planning, and that's translated into leadership development to prepare for our future leaders in this district. We're going to have a presentation on cyber integrity, cyber safety, and cyber bullying. And I will point out on this, I think this is an interesting presentation on the part of the Olathe School District, to be very proactive in an area that I know there's a lot of media coverage on, and parent questions, and staff questions, and student questions. And I think you will find this a very interesting report about what we're doing to be proactive in this area. There will also be a presentation on nutrition and wellness, that council update by Dr. Hull. Following presentations, if we're ahead of schedule, we'll pick up some items following that, but we'll have a comfort break. And then our recognitions and awards are about at 6:45. Following our recognitions and awards, which we have quite a few, as we normally do in May and June at the end of the year, we will also take then public comments at about 7:00 or 7:10 this evening. Following public comments, the board will have the consent agenda. These are items that represent matters that the board may approve without detailed discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed for separate discussion as an action item upon request by the superintendent or any board member. And the board has received supporting information on all items prior to action on this agenda. Following the consent agenda, there is a consent of actions, of bids, contracts, and agreements. Those will be identified by the president at that time. Then other action items tonight include action to set a special meeting date and time for our end-of-year meeting, and also to change date of regular July meeting, and that will be the second meeting that's set tonight. Following that are a list of future action items that the board has been provided information on, and for which the board may need to take action in the future. And staff will be prepared to answer questions on any of those. And then there are several written reports, including our end-of-year school site council report and a legislative update. Following our regular session, the board will turn to executive session to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged and attorney-client relationships. They will also be discussing matters related to employer/employee negotiations to protect the district's right to confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest, and for preliminary discussion related to acquisition of real property to protect the public interest in obtaining the property, and to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. And they will note their time to return to regular session. There may be one or two action items following executive session tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. All. Related to her last comment, board members, on the consent agenda, item number 5.14, which relates to a benefit district petition, that item is going to be delayed till after the executive session for potential action. So when we get to the consent agenda, just to make you aware, we'll take that item off the consent agenda and move it to the end. Okay, we're on item 2.01 on succession planning, and Dr. Gary George is going to make this presentation to us. Welcome, Dr. George.
Thank you. We wanted to take a few minutes and bring you up to date with where we are on the succession planning process that we instituted this year. And you may recall that last fall, November, we informed you of what we were doing, what the process looked like, and some of the research that we had done to begin this process of having a succession planning program here in the school district. We've implemented the program, and you may recall that we were looking at assigning some people to some action learning teams, and those teams have been responsible for doing some research, looking, or we also, as putting the program together, we looked at the literature, we looked at the Baldrige winning organizations, and we consulted with some of the organizations in the area that have used this process. And we had 11 participants go through the process this year, and they were assigned to a team that had an action learning project. And as part of this process, we had a team that worked in the fall, and we had a team that worked in the winter into the spring to complete their work. The first group provided some internal consulting to our human resources department, and that was helpful and very valuable and very helpful to them. The second group focused on improving organizational climate for classified staff. And both projects have been helpful and have yielded important information for us. Each group spent about eight to nine weeks on their projects, and the groups had to survey appropriate staff, conduct research, conduct interviews, do research, look at processes, maybe develop some processes or some products that they wanted to share, brainstorm, and then the participants presented their recommendations to Dr. All for consideration of implementation and going forward. All of the participants, and we surveyed them afterwards, and all of them agreed that the action learning projects had added to their knowledge base of the district. All of the participants, 100 percent, agreed or strongly agreed that the feedback from the LPI assessment was helpful. The LPI is a 360-degree assessment. It's the Leadership Practices Inventory, and it gives the people some information on how they are perceived, or how their leadership skills are perceived by a supervisor, by their peers, and by their directory ports. And they get that information, and it's plotted on a scale and compared with a large base of people across the country. I think there's over a million people who have participated in this process, so we have a huge database for comparative purposes. All of the participants indicated that they plan to make some changes in their leadership based on the process, going through the LPI. And also, they have evaluated the whole succession planning process and offered recommendations. And we'll take those recommendations and try to go through a cycle of refinement and improve the process for this upcoming year. Some of the comments that we got at the end are interested. One person indicated they felt cheated because it's already over, and they enjoyed it so much. Others said, "Thanks so much for being a part of the experience," and it's been a very positive and constructive process, and the experience gave them valuable insights into individual improvement. In summary, the succession planning process that we had seems to have worked very well. It has provided experiences, positive experiences for the participants. They grew in their leadership knowledge and their skill, and they want to make some changes based on their experiences. And it provided the district with valuable recommendations for improving processes and addressing the climate issue in one particular case. With that, I'll be happy to respond to questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. George. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Give me an example of some of the projects they undertook.
This particular project that you see coming down the aisle is a flip chart process that was developed, and it's a guide for principals and building supervisors, and it includes best practices in working with classified staff. And there are building responsibilities and district responsibilities. And the very last page is a check sheet that principals will fill out and indicate the things that they have been doing. And some of the things are fairly basic, and some of them are more sophisticated, but it's a way of beginning to deploy best practices out to every building administrator in the district or building supervisor, in the case of our support buildings, and in terms of working with classified staff to make sure that we are attending to climate issues and we don't overlook something. That's one example that we have.
I might add just a couple other comments about the value of this. First of all, in this particular project, this was a concrete piece that they could share with others. They did quite extensive research, full presentation, a lot of other additional materials and data analysis on climate surveys that were part of it, but this was something that they could share, and we could kick off this fall for the entire district. In the case of the first team, they really did research on our internal processes, on hiring practices to help the HR department. So they interviewed principals, got their perspectives, interviewed HR folks, and were able then to sit down and provide feedback. One of the things that was nice about this, I had my doubts that an action learning project was a strategy that we should do. I didn't want the leaders here to think they were in another graduate class, because they have plenty of those for their certification. But what this did, we gave them real needs identified by myself and other senior leaders that we just sometimes don't get to because of our plates are being full and said, "You pick." And we gave them like three or four choices, so they were limited in their choices, and all of those choices were something that we felt like we needed to have done. And then they had to figure out as a team how to do that. Another piece of that is that whether or not this is a plus or not, but then I met with them, we did some other studies with them on some skills, and then I provided them an opportunity to meet with me individually, to kind of share their interests for their future, as well as to just talk about their experiences and to have me, as superintendent right now, to get to know some of these people. Some of them were assistant principals, elementary principals, junior high, high school, district-level leaders. And so, that was that personal connection that was part of me being able to have that individual conversation with those people. So we felt like it was a good start. Another benefit for their participation is their interest in having other professional development opportunities. I think this has opened up the door for that. And then finally, one of the interesting pieces of this is that we made sure that the five people were mixed levels, mixed roles, so they were not the same leaders that maybe they always typically associated with by function. And I think that was a positive from those that participated in the experience, that they had the opportunity to work at a team of people that existed in the district that maybe they had not worked with at that level before. So those are some observations that I have. It's not the only piece for succession planning, but it's a good start here.
Thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you.
Our next item is 2.02, Cyber Olathe Issues, and I believe Dr. Banikowski is going to present this. Is that correct?
We're going to have this team do it.
Thank you.
Do you want to do an introductory? Good evening. I'm Heather Schoonover, and I facilitate the Safe and Drug Free School Programs and Youth Friends for our district. And this is Donna Roper. She is the coordinator for Instructional Technology. And Mary Ellen Grant is the coordinator of our Library Media Services here at the district. We really appreciate your time tonight and listening to a very exciting and proactive approach that we have taken on here in the district. It's called CO3. And we met last fall and really looked at a way that we could be a leader in our community with the cyber issues that we see. So we sat back and we looked at how we could do this, and we coined a term called CO3. The C is for cyber, the O is for Olathe, and we looked at three strands: cyber bullying, cyber integrity, and cyber safety for all our areas, our patrons and our community, students and staff.
The reason that we decided to have this group was because there is an increased use of technology. Everything that we do seems to touch on technology, and we thought that this was a very important thing that we needed to look at. In addition, it also supports the proactive, or it's a proactive initiative that supports safe schools for all, and it supports the district's vision for academic success, preparing students for their 21st century workplace, and our vision for students prepared for their future. Our mission statement says, "CO3 will highlight district, community, state, and national resources that support student, staff, parent, and community awareness of cyber issues, including cyber safety, cyber bullying, and plagiarism."
How low can this go? Our initiative targets three groups: teachers, parents, and students. And I'd like to provide you with some examples of how we work with these different groups. For example, with regard to teachers, our recent summer conference allowed us an opportunity to bring in some nice sessions that were very well-attended by the staff in attendance at the summer conference. For example, we were able to assemble a panel of experts dealing with cyber safety issues, and panel members included representatives from the Attorney General's Office, the FBI, and the KBI. We also facilitated a web training for business and computer teachers at the high school level, as well as secondary library media specialists, and even some of our SROs, and the training focused on cyber safety issues. Another session featured a national presenter on copyright issues. And again, all those sessions were very well-attended. Heather's going to talk about our parent interaction.
Parents are just a very integral part of this whole cyber issue. Really, when you look at it, I must say, we give our kids driver's education, and we do a lot with their education, but really, they are driving the information highway for us as parents. And so, we really felt like we need to bring them into the table and give them some education on all these issues. So what we did a couple weeks ago, Dr. All allowed us to meet with the PTO presidents. We all met, and they had a strong interest in this. And in fact, from that, we had a lot of emails and calls, and they would like the CO3 program to come to their PTO meetings. And so, that's one of our aspects that we're working on. Well, in that meeting, they gave us some ideas, and they said, "Hey, why don't you put that information on the website so they can look at that at their own time and look at some resources?" So we did that. Information and links for parents to go to on what is net lingo, or what is appropriate for an elementary-age student to do, or a junior-high student, or secondary student, is all on our district website. We also took that one step further. It's also on the school building website, too. So that's kind of some programs that we're doing for our parents.
And with regard to students, we are addressing issues within various curriculum areas. For example, in the library media curriculum, beginning in the primary grades on up through high school, we address plagiarism and copyright issues. Our computer and business teachers work with cyber safety at the secondary level. And then in our elementary computer lab program facilitated by the Computer Learning Associates, we also deal with cyber safety issues. Additionally, as appropriate, when curriculums are up for revision, we will be working to include various cyber topics in those curriculum areas.
We wanted to share some of our future plans with you. As you can see, it's maintain and develop those partnerships. We talked to you about who we brought into the summer conference. We're working with the Attorney General's Office, the Kansas City FBI, the Kansas FBI Unit, and also, our Olathe Police Department really looks at cyber issues, too. And our SROs have been very instrumental in helping us come to the school and bring these issues to our staff and our students when they see a need. It's important that we continue to provide current resources, so we will update that on our website. And to facilitate staff training and parent training, like we said, we'll go out to the PTOs and be a resource for them, or connect them with community resources. And then our new teachers who are coming onboard in the fall will bring this issue to them as well. I will say, I was very excited at summer conference. There was a teacher who said, "Okay, what can we do to our panel members in Olathe?" And their response was, "You're doing a good job with CO3." So that was very exciting, that we have already taken the steps to be a leader in some of these cyber issues.
On our last slide, we wanted to share with you one of the examples of what our teachers are doing out in the buildings. This is a screensaver that was developed by Jason Veach, who is one of the CLAs at Central Elementary. And he has taken a piece of information from NetSmarts and has incorporated it so that every time a student, or teacher, or parent comes to the school and logs on to a computer, they will see this, and it brings to their attention some of the cyber things that they need to remember when they are using the computers. We took this because we thought it was such a good example, and we've trained the other CLAs in the elementary buildings to make one of these so that it's appropriate for their school as well. So we just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Are there any questions or comments?
Just my comment. I commend you what you're doing here. I don't think we can put enough focus on this. I consider this to be our big problem frontier that's in front of our children today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Thank you.
I think your analogy, Heather, to driving is very appropriate here. They're driving this internet superhighway, and we've got to, we're all struggling to keep up with them.
Exactly.
So, thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you.
I did want to add that, you know, we have, for example, in our school district, I just want to remind the board and the public, we have electronic filtering that is federally required, and that is a part of our internet here in the district, and that is important. But it takes several factors in order to provide for safety. So we can use electronic filtering. But another piece of that is educating our students on acceptable use guidelines, which we have. And the third piece is supervision, and the same goes at home. There has to be multiple ways for parents to monitor the safety of their students, and there's not going to be one tool in and of itself that probably is going to take care of everything. So we hope the education piece here for our parents and also our staff members is important. Then as a workplace skill, you know, I think you can see out in the workplace are changes people inadvertently may find themselves in difficulty as an employee simply because they've misused the technology there. So we think that's a lifelong skill that our students should understand before they leave here and go into a workplace, that there is an integrity piece to how we approach the use of technology, and it fits into how we try to approach ethics in the district.
Good, thank you, Dr. All. Our next presentation is item 2.03, dealing with nutrition and wellness, a council update, and Dr. Bob Hull is going to make this presentation.
We're going to provide a brief overview and update for you on the progress of the Nutrition and Wellness Council over this past and Wellness Council over this past academic year. And along with me tonight, we have Ms. Cindy Gilmour, our Director of Health Services for the district, Mr. Earl Martin, our Director of Elementary Ed, who will be part of this presentation. You may recall, a year ago, Nutrition and Wellness Council came before you with a recommendation to formally adopt some policies and procedures that would formulate our local wellness policy. The board did adopt these policies, and as part of the policies, there was a formation of Nutrition and Wellness Council. It is the intention of the Nutrition and Wellness Council on an annual basis to provide an update to the Board of Education of the progress made, and maybe some of the issues and challenges that are still out there in this arena of nutrition and wellness. Our purpose statement is pretty self-explanatory, as you can see, and we won't necessarily read it, but it obviously defines and gives guidance to the roles of the council and the work that is to be done by the council. The mission statement, which is a little bit different, emphasizes the partnership aspect of nutrition and wellness, the partnership aspect with the home, parents, and family. The Nutrition and Wellness Council is a broadly-based membership, and designed so, as you can see, we have approximately, well, we do have approximately 30 members on the council, consisting of parents, students. We have a school board member, building staff, and district staff. The history of the Nutrition and Wellness Council, actually, we have been in existence in some form or another for approximately two years now. We first started when we wanted to look at the issue and have an emphasis on what products were sold in the vending machines across the school district, and what products were sold à la carte sales with food service. And then about a year ago, there was legislation both on the federal level, the Child Nutrition Act, and on the state level, Senate Bill 154, which broadly expanded the purpose and the scope of the nutrition and wellness arena. And part of our policies have been, and procedures have been, to adopt these changes as required by statute. As we have progressed down this journey, and we have a long ways to go on this journey, one of the startling quotes, which has stuck in all of our minds and is helping to guide and drive us, was given to us by Dr. Carmona, who is a Surgeon General for the Health and Human Services. And his quote is most interesting. "Because of the increasing rates of obesity, unhealthy eating habits, and physical inactivity, we may see the first generation that will be less healthy and have a shorter life expectancy than their parents." And we're talking about our children and our students, of course, who are in school now. Work of the council was divided into the following areas, and we have established goals and action plans that we will briefly highlight in each one of these areas. They are nutrition, nutrition education, physical activity, and other building-based activity. And we'll have Mrs. Gilmour come and talk to us first about the nutrition area.
Good evening. One of the most valuable things I think about the council is that it gives us the opportunity to provide a conscious effort to this problem, and also a combined effort to this problem. I like to always start by saying that this public school arena does not own this problem. You know, we are not the sole owners, but we are a part of the problem because students spend a significant portion of their waking hours with us. They eat at least one meal with us. Some of them eat two meals with us and after-school snack with us. And so we should do what we can do that's within our control to help alleviate this problem. So we have the four different areas, and I'm going to start with the nutrition area. And as you remember from last year, a goal statement was created for every one of the areas. And I would just like to point out to you the key words in this goal statement. The first phrase that I think is key is "all foods," and during the school day, including extended learning programs. Another set of key words, "meet or exceed," with consideration toward variety, appeal, taste, safety, packaging, cost, and age appropriateness. There are many, many factors this council has had to consider, and I think that's part of what helps explain why this has been a long process, because all those factors go into it. Scott Kingery is the individual that leads this subgroup Committee on Nutrition, and he is on vacation this week, or he would have been here to help us present tonight, too. So I am bringing before you the major accomplishments, some of from last year, which will be implemented next year. So for this area, in 2007, 2008, we will be moving towards, and we've worked to move towards this next year, that all of our vended beverages in the vended machines, at least 50% of them, will be water, milk, juice. Some schools may opt to go higher than 50% with those healthier options, but that is the minimum goal that all of our schools will obtain. You see the same goal for vended and à la carte foods as what you just saw above for beverages. Now, the other thing that we have done this year is we identified all the different vendors that the schools use. We use a variety of different vendors. All of those vendors have been notified of this policy statement, and we are still firming up the accountability process. And so this subgroup has brought to us some options to consider of how we will carry out the accountability piece of this. The last bullet on this slide says that staff will be encouraged to use non-food rewards so that we won't be using food as a reward every time, trying to, not that we won't ever use food as a reward or a celebration, but trying to get staff to think of a variety of other things to do in addition to food. And along with that, when food is used, we will encourage, we will recommend snacks that are healthier options to select. So this year, this group has worked to develop these guidelines, and they are being further finalized in just their packaging of how the pamphlet will look or the flyer will look. And those will be distributed to staff this fall. In addition, they have shared those with key stakeholders and been able to get input from them, like principals at both levels.
If I may, on the accountability part of this, which will be interesting to see how you develop that, but these targets of 50%, is that a target of 50% of what's offered, or is that a consumption target?
That's a good, that's a good comment. It's of what's offered in the vending machine. Yes. Very good, very good point.
I had a question where it says lower in fat and sugar.
Yes. Okay. And I have that in front of me, so I can read it to you. I don't have a separate slide that shows it. But that is well-defined. Fat, for example, if we're talking about foods, except for nuts, seeds, and nut butters, not more than 35% of the total calories come from fat. So that would be an acceptable product, then. If it's a nut and seed, it would be acceptable if it goes over that. In the area of sugar, except for fruit without added sugar, not more than 35% of the weight from total sugar. So those are well-defined. And there is a website that's developed, too, that we've shared with vendors, that they can go to and plug in an item, and it tells whether it meets these different criteria. Okay.
Excuse me, going along with Mr. Gilmour's question, the goal is for actual availability or offering. To me, I'm not sure that that's the proper goal, is it? Should not be consumption? And how do we plan to monitor that and then maybe offer some sort of control in the future?
I think as I move into nutrition education, it might help answer that, because even though these are grouped into four different areas, there's a lot of overlap, because it's like you can't do one without the nutrition education piece, too, and you don't want to forget about physical activity, and then you want the marketing involving the parents. So if I can move on to that, you know, ideally, I would say to you, I would just go with 100%, all right? But because, again, go back to that slide where I said there's all these factors, and we want this to be something that the students accept, we want it to be something that we're not hurting the revenue that comes in from the vending machines. So we have had, where we have healthy foods served at our council meetings, we have very rich discussion, okay? And so those are some of the many, many items we've had to discuss. So if I don't adequately answer your question, come back to us, okay? So let me move on to nutrition education, and again, I want to remind you what our goal statement was, and I'm going to point out the key words to you again: all students. Another key word in this mission statement is integrated into classroom instruction. Also, with nutrition education occurring in cafeteria settings and school-based activities. And then there's, at the second sentence, talks about the importance of students and their families being educated. Our plans for implementation next year, this year is a health education curriculum revision year for us, and the rubric we receive from the state suggests that at a minimum, that students receive five hours of nutrition education every year. So as we have been drafting the curriculum to bring before you, we have worked to put at least five hours of nutrition education in kindergarten through sixth grade, in seventh grade health, and in 10th grade health. And then it will be offered in electives at the eighth, ninth, 11th, and 12th grade years, and students are not required to have health those years. You should expect to see the 7th and 10th grade curriculum this summer. I believe it's, and the elementary curriculum is, will not be ready till sometime during the school year next year. But that is the progress we have made. We have also started reviewing resources, because it's one thing to have it written in your curriculum, it's another that you have to have resources available to teach it. We have been exploring a possible web-based resource that's not just nutrition, but all types of health topics that would be very handy for teachers to obtain their lesson plans from. We have been looking at resources the teachers currently have, like the DASH resource that's used in Science in K-2, and looking at the nutrition components of it, and seeing whether or not we feel that those components are up to date, and if they meet the five-hour requirement. I have been the council member that's been leading this segment, the nutrition education portion. Another part, we talked about integrated into the cafeteria setting. So another area that we worked on this year was creating posters, secondary-targeted ones and elementary-targeted ones that could be displayed in the cafeteria settings. We made this into a project for one of our graphic communications classes at Oletha North, and engaging the students there to develop these posters. But our subcommittee researched the topics that would, that research has shown would be most effective. So for example, at the secondary level, we're targeting posters that try to encourage the kids to eat breakfast, that help them recognize what's the correct portion size, that help them understand that calories in should equal calories out that you take in, and also help them realize that drinks, the difference in different drinks, the nutrition benefit versus calories. Because if they, one thing about our youth today is they are drinking a lot of their calories versus eating a lot of calories. At the elementary level, we want kids to really understand what a healthy food is, how important it is to have a variety of, eat a variety of foods, breakfast again, and a healthy body image. So that's some of our poster development that I'm excited, and our goal is to rotate those posters every quarter at those levels, and to have at least three years developed. And we might even work in a poster contest, and let the kids help with that. I want to tell you about some other exciting things that have happened in the nutrition education area. We had some pilot activities going on this year. One had an acronym CHOICE. This stands for Choosing Healthy Options Involving Cuisine and Exercise. The school nurse, Kathy Colajek, at Frontier Trail, wrote this as a grant, bright light grant from the Oletha Public School Foundation, and she received that. And this was a multi-stepped activity. It started with the students reading the book, Chew on This, that was written initially for adults, and then a version was written targeted to adolescents. And they read that in their advisory period. This was a pilot group of 7th-grade girls. And they used, they integrated that with language art goals, persuasive texts. And this author definitely shows persuasive writing. They then took that into their health class after they'd read that book and did lessons on nutrition, understanding nutrient-dense foods, how to read a label. And then they worked on looking at the foods that were served in the cafeteria and in the vending machine, and determining how nutrient-dense those foods were, and choosing the healthy options. This culminated with an activity that all the 7th-grade students participated in, which had a sampling and tasting of foods that are healthier choices, and helping the children, the students then voted on the ones they liked best. And this is what I'm tying back to, how we could move toward all the items in the machine being healthier choices and getting that student input. They had taste samples of Smoothie King, and they had physical fitness activities that you see on this video. Another pilot activity we had happen this year is another example of a school-wide event that's something else that's encouraged, that we get all of our schools participating in a school-wide event once a year that focuses on nutrition and physical activity. And at Pioneer Trail, the school nurse there organized a health fair day with the work of the PE teachers. And during PE class, which all 7th and 8th graders have, they participated in this health event. There were 16 booths set up. Half of the booths, they were all different types of health topics, but half of the topics centered on physical fitness or nutrition. And prizes were given every hour, and it's the, and the students had a list of questions that could only be answered by going to different booths. So they got rewarded if they got a certain percentage of their questions answered, and that kept the students engaged and going around and visiting. And it turned out to be a very successful day, and we're hoping to expand that to our other junior highs as well, and maybe conduct this at half of the junior highs every year, and then every student would have a chance to participate. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Earl Martin to talk about the next segment.
I've been on the physical activity subcommittee. I'm trying to be brief with this. If we can look at just the, oh, I did it. What did I do? Again, to kind of follow Cindy's example of just picking out some of the key words, our goal statement, physical activity, is to encourage at least one hour of moderate-to-vigorous physical activity each day, regardless of the setting, for students as well as staff. And I guess one of the questions we can ask ourselves is whether or not we've ourselves reached that goal yet for today. But that is one of our goals, to really make that a focus for students, and to educate families as well for the need for lifetime fitness and wellness. We focused on four different areas. One, pre- and post-fitness testing in PE classes at all levels from grades four through 12. We've had some fitness testing, but it's really been kind of scattered and not really consistent. And we're even working this summer on trying to get, come up with a consistent system so that we can do that and provide that information, confidential information, to students so that they have consent for themselves, goals in that area. We're also looking at before and after-school fitness activities for students. We had some great examples of that this year, and we want to continue to implement those kinds of activities. I'll mention an example of that in just a minute. Family fitness education, we want to focus on that area as well. We've talked about providing some fitness calendars, as well as putting information on the website, as well as just some information to send home to parents in school newsletters about family fitness, and have some family fitness education nights that we are going to work with the City Parks and Rec Department to collaborate on some of those activities. And lastly, just at the elementary level, to increase physical activity at recess. We have a couple of different things to look at that. One is, we are asking schools not to use recess as a punishment at the elementary level, that students do need to go outside and do need to engage in physical activity during recess time, that it actually is an academic benefit for them to, you know, get that energy out and be able to get oxygen to the brain when they have a chance to go outside and run around at recess time. So we want to make sure that that happens for the majority of students unless there's a safety issue involved. And secondly, we're looking at some models to specifically encourage physical activity at recess, and not just a hang-around and visit time, but that physical activity will indeed be involved. One of the examples of an after-school program that we piloted this year at Rolling Ridge in collaboration with the City Parks and Rec was a program called KidFit at Rolling Ridge. It really was a great example of a combination of both fitness and nutrition education. During the hour that the kids stayed after school, it was facilitated by both the PE teacher and the nurse at Rolling Ridge, and the kids got to engage in various different stations of physical activity. And then one of the stations that they rotated around to involved some nutrition education. And it was really a great model that we've had those two individuals present to others at our summer conference, and we're looking at that being implemented at some of our other schools next year. There's a lot of other really great models for this type of program that we are encouraging at all of our buildings for after-school programs. In other building-based activities, there actually are a couple of different areas that we're focusing on. One is just the marketing communication plan. That is really important, that our patrons and our community is aware of what we're going to try to do as we implement the wellness plan during the course of the to try to do as we implement the wellness plan during the course of the year this next year. So, our community relations department is helping with that, and that's going to be an important piece of this entire project. In employee wellness also falls under this category, and I think you've already had a little bit of information about how employees have been encouraged to participate in the screenings and health risk appraisals and the incentives involved in that. And we really, as you can see, we've had great results from that project this year, especially in comparison to previous years, and we're going to be able to collect some data on the percentage of our employees participating and, you know, the benefits that that's going to bring to our district as a whole.
Well, in conclusion, this is a complicated and complex issue and area. The pervasiveness of it, it really impacts all aspects of the school, both from the organization, from the logistical side, the operational side, as well as, of course, from the learning side. One of the tasks of the council is to monitor the progress toward achieving the goals. And we had several different aspects of this that we looked at, and three of them are highlighted here. First of all, we needed some statistical way to monitor the progress, and as we had some spirited and interesting discussions, finally, we came upon the idea, we said, "Let's align this with the strategic directions that the Board of Education has established for the district." And so, upon investigation and work, this is what we did, and so, we are plugged into goal area number five, specifically area 5.3, that will support the healthy lifestyles for students and staff, and this is the involvement and organizational climate area. And of course, the value of this is then also, then it's plugged into our Baldridge efforts, our quality management, you know, emphasis, and so, it just fit nicely with that. Also, action plans have been written for each one of our goal areas as well as for the employee wellness area, and Earl and Cindy both talked about some of those areas. And then, since it is a statute, we have some regulations, some requirements, some reporting requirements, and that is called the Wellness Policy Builder, that is a checklist that we have to provide documentation and submit that to the State of Education, and then they rate the district and the council of how we're making progress toward our goals. So, all that complicated issue, we wanted to give you hopefully a brief update, and with that, we would stand for some questions or comments that you could direct either to Cindy, Earl, or myself.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
I just had one comment in regards to all the work that the Nutrition and Wellness Council has done, and this is a problem that we face as a nation, and we didn't get here overnight, and it's going to take us some time to re-educate ourselves and to re-educate our children about the benefits of healthy eating and healthy lifestyles. So, the work that we've done so far is, is important, and we've begun going down the path to having a healthier student body, and probably the most, a lot of things have already been done that wasn't mentioned tonight in regards to our lunch, our lunch program and going away from fried foods to baked foods, and the Nutrition Department does, does a good job in making sure that that's a balanced meal that the children get. The biggest issue, one of the, one of the issues is the vending machine, certainly, and we understand that that's the one that's probably the most high-profile and catches the most attention from folks, and I appreciate the fact that we've gone fifty percent and we question, how are we going to get the children to use the products that are healthy rather than the products that are not so healthy, because we probably have a tendency to go over there and select the item that has the highest fat content and the high, calorie content and the highest sugar content. But this, this is a start in moving in the right direction, and I think we have to be, we have to understand that we need to move in that direction, but also, it, we have to take measured steps, calculated steps here to ensure that the product that we put in there is acceptable to the children and that they learn that it's better for them than an alternative, but not go cold, just, just go stone cold on it. So, I understand the process here.
Right. Mr. Parker, maybe I could add just briefly to that. One of the unwritten mantras, if you would, the philosophies of the councils we approach this, since this is such an important issue, we wanted to do this in a, I think, phased-in or step-by-process, as we refer to, but we wanted to create an evolution in the right direction, not necessarily a revolution where it would be rejected or people wouldn't buy into it because, you know, it's so important. And, and so, we've approached that, and it seems like maybe we're moving too slowly, but again, the issue is of such great importance to school and society, we want to do this right, and we want to have that profound impact. And I just also wanted to say thank you, Mr. Parker, to you as the board member serving on our council, as well out here in the audience. There are several other staff members who've served on the council, and their passion and their commitment has just been so refreshing, and without these great people and their work, the progress that we've made certainly could not have been done.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very, oh, Ms. Ashley.
I would just briefly say that, you know, in, in the public school system, we try to be all things to all people, but this is certainly something that is truly important to all people, so I sincerely thank you for your efforts as well, and the detail that you have included in here, it's incredible, and let's, let's go for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We are almost exactly on time on our agenda tonight so far, which I know you're all looking at me amazed, but with that, we'll take a fifteen-minute comfort break, at which time we'll come back for recognitions and awards.